At six thirty-one. Can I remind everybody that we are being digitally recorded and? Oh, hold on. We're gonna be, I know we are by the cameras. Are we good?
Recording in progress.
Yeah, we're good over there. Okay, and that's recording, so we're being recorded. And at some point in time, everybody can watch us on YouTube. Other than that, do we have anyone here for open session? Hold on, I'll wait till you can look at the thing just to make sure. Nobody in the Zoom in the room there can?
We do have one attendee on support mover. It's Bowie.
Okay.
Hi Bowie.
Is it anybody on open s- uh wanna be here for open session? Nope? Any answers?
That's Bowie.
Well, either Whitney.
Yeah.
Who else was on there?
Uh, the Heather.
Hello.
Hi Bowie, how are you?
Hi everyone, good. I'm Mel.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to open session, or were you here for the? For the part that was on the agenda later?
Oh no, I'm here for the owner compliance. Yeah, the owner discussion.
Okay. Alright. So, no open session, we can move on to announcements. I have a few things that I have heard through the grapevine. Youth baseball and softball signups are going on right now. So if you have a youngster that would like to sign up, they're good through, I believe it's like mid-March. You can sign up, you can go to their, uh, either their Facebook account or website and find all of how to sign up the kids for keyball and softball and baseball. Q Drug has a fun little contest going on. It's called Go Purple. And they'll want you to register by February twenty-eighth. And basically they're looking for people to light up their yards or businesses for, uh, in purple. To bring awareness to Q Drug and, and, uh, um, all kind, they have a whole website basically up for this. Um, to bring up for substance abuse and all kinds of things. Um, they have first and second prize for businesses and first and second prize for residents. And then they have like a best in show prize. Different things, so you can go to their website again, it's Q Drug. And check out everything, I believe registration is free and they need that by two-twenty-eight. And judging is between March fifth and March tenth, and all the rules are on there. The Hubbardston Lions have another meat raffle coming up on March third at seven PM down at the Rotten Gun Club. So definitely check that out. And then the next other thing that is coming up soon is Keep Hubbardston Beautiful on four-twenty-two. Eight to noon, and we'll get into those details later, because that's a little bit further out, but I figured I'd just kinda keep it on everybody's radar. But other than that, that's all I have for announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements they'd like to bring up? Nope? Okay, moving on. Alright, so next up we have consent agenda. We have, um, no minutes at this point in time, but we do have a few appointments. We have Laura Foley to the Cultural Council. Michael Pierce and Jeffrey Champagne.
Champagne.
Champagne, thank you. To the civilian traffic control appointments. And then we also have, um, an addition of, um, Bobby. She's gonna be interim treasurer-collector. And that starts on March sixth, believed, yes. So that's what we have for the consent agenda. Can I, uh, waive the waiting period and have a motion to accept and approve, please?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second for discussion.
Thank you, uh, discussion?
Yeah, just one quick question, need on Michael Pierce and Jeffrey Champagne.
Yeah.
What's the expiration date for those appointments? Is that the end thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on any of it? No? Alright, we're gonna do roll call voting. Um, Peter?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright, approved by all, thank you. Up next, we have new business, we have a poll petition. I'm gonna ask in the Zoom audience, is there someone to speak in favor of the poll petition in there?
Um, I'm Matt Vera, I am here representing National Grid. I'm not sure if, um, is this my time to speak, or are you asking about like the audience or something?
No, you're, it's your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, National Grid is petitioning for a meat spend poll in between polls four and three. At Williamsville Road. Uh, we need that poll for reliability. We are planning on installing a new re-closer. On poll three. And we would need a new poll to install a tree face bank, which currently is installed at poll three. So we need that space to increase the reliability of that field.
Okay. Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anybody, oop, anybody opposed to the petition? No? Okay. Do we have any discussion about this lovely poll petition in front of us from the select board?
Katie?
Yes.
My only question is if, um, problem to Nate, has Travis expressed any concerns about this?
Travis has not expressed concerns, and I know he did look at this.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other discussion? No, okay, I would like to, um, can I have a motion to either accept or decline the Williamsville poll petition by National Grid, please?
I make a motion to accept the Williamsville poll petition by National Grid.
And the second?
Second.
Thank you, do I have any discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna do a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Katie, yes, alright. Passes all, and we can move on. Next up, we have correspondence. Oh, by the way, thank you to, um, what was his name, Matt?
Matt, yes, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, for coming in, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all, good night.
Alright.
Cheers, sir.
Um, so next up, we have correspondence, town clerk charter section four dash seven dash one notice. Nate, do you wanna speak to that at all?
Yes, uh.
Please, thank you.
I was speaking with Kristen, and while going through the charter, and the Monroes were involved in this as well, they... Heather actually brought me into a section of the charter that pointed out that if a elected position went two years without having... In less than or equal to the amount of people running for the amount of positions, then it could be brought to, well, it shall. It does not say can, will, or may. It says it shall be brought to town meeting for consideration about a change in the way that entity is selected. With that, we looked back at the last couple of years, and it's been no secret that we've had, been having and having trouble getting people interested in running for office. This year, I know there's gonna be a number of vacancies coming up on Parks and Recreation. And the four boards as outlined in the town clerk's letter are the four boards that meet that provision of the charter. I believe it was Board of Health, Cemetery, Finance Committee, and Parks and Rec.
Alright, so basically, so do all four of them need to go to town meeting, or should this be? Should, should we take a deeper dive into this and like kinda look at it strategically? Or what, what are your thoughts on this? What is anybody's thoughts on this?
Can, can you say what you said again, 'cause it was kinda convoluted in my head. What's the problem? We don't have people volunteering to sign up for boards?
So, I guess, Chris, if I can, Katie, may I?
Go ahead.
So, I brought this to Nate's attention, because it's actually in our charter that we have a provision that says when we have a failure to elect, and it happens on two or more occasions in a row, it's actually the town clerk's job to bring it to our attention as the select board. And as the select board, we're required to put this board as an article to the townspeople to give consideration of whether or not it makes sense for them to have an amendment to the charter to make the position go from elected to appointed. So this is obligation under the charter of the town clerk to notify us as the select board that we're required to put an article forward and the warrants up and coming. And the positions Nate and Kristen had identified are the Board of Health, Finance Committee, Parks and Rec, and Cemetery Commission. So this is really notice to us, per the charter, as long as we feel that the methods to find these pieces of information are accurate, which is that number of candidates is less than or equal to the number of positions on the ballot. Then at that point, all we need to really do is just direct Nate to put together an article, warrant article, for consideration for the annual town meeting, to go on to convert these positions from elected to appointed with an amendment to our charter.
How does that affect the people that are currently elected?
If you read the charter, you stay on until the end of your term. But there's no guaranteeing that town meeting is going to choose to go that way. They could say, hey, you know what, like, we like that, those boards as elected, because we, the townspeople, get to choose it. No, but it does straightforward say that the town clerk is obligated to alert the select board when this type of issue occurs.
Would the article be all four, or would they be four individual articles, one for each board to consider?
That was, that was going to be my next question, I feel like that would get to be...
If it was all four, I feel like it would definitely be a probably, at least in my mind, I would say no, because that gives, that takes away too many positions.
I would likely do it separately, because I can only foresee that one or two of those boards won't mind becoming appointed. And one or two of them will not want to become appointed. So I would likely do it separately to avoid the article being ripped apart on the floor.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. I, it would go to shambles.
Who does the appointing?
It would be the select board if, if they were to change the way in which these entities are chosen.
So, yeah, I could see, I could see it going one at a time, I definitely could not see all four in one article. I, I don't think, I think that'd be a huge waste of time, um, for us putting forth an article that had all four.
So we're, are we open for discussion on this?
We are, we're for discussion, and then there was a member of the public that would like to speak as well.
Yes, we are.
The only, I'm questioning, so if you're on the ballot and it doesn't, position doesn't get elected, it's a no, okay, so what does it take? Two years, you gotta be on the ballot two years, nobody elected to that position? Then you get appointed by the select board?
If town meeting sees to it that changing the way, the board...
Right. So, once that happens, that, that's a voted, that's a voted-in position that's gone forever.
Unless they were, unless town meeting was to amend the charter a second time, changing it from appointed to elected.
It could always be re, undone, yeah.
It could always be...
Right, but you could end up with positions that really need to be elected, and, but it is appointed though. You know, like, I think, to me, it comes to my FinCom, I think they should be elected.
I, I feel the same way, but our charter clearly says that it shall go to the people.
Right, to let them vote on it.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that, um, but if it, yeah, I mean, they're trying to keep the committees full, that's the purpose of that, of this.
And they can choose. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But once you lose that vote in, it goes to an appointment. It can be reversed, but you gotta, you know what I mean?
I know.
It's a lot harder to reverse things than it is.
It certainly is, so I, I'm, that's the only thing I'm a little wary of, 'cause, you know, you start appointing people that should've been a voted position, it just...
And, and you have, you still have the same problem, somebody still has to volunteer to be appointed.
Agreed.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, agreed.
There's no guarantees we're still gonna fill these.
And we have trouble doing that, so...
Yeah. That's what I mean, there's no...
But it's gonna go, what'd you say, two election, two, two years, or two election cycles, or two?
Two election cycles.
Yeah.
It's gotta go two election cycles without getting...
Filled, yeah.
The number of open slots even potentially filled before this even comes to pass.
Yeah. Yep.
So what that tells me is, you know, if it goes two election cycles, people really aren't interested for this position. And if we need it filled to conduct business, then we should appoint somebody. Who's willing to go in and be part of the board and get business done.
And, if you think about it, the select board is appointing temporary bodies to fill failure, to elects anyhow.
Correct.
Right. But it doesn't get rid of the elected position?
No, but it does not get rid of the elective, elective position, yes.
Right. Right.
The, the town clerk and I were simply bringing forward something that we, that was brought to our attention, that we thought would be pertinent to discuss.
Do we have how many spots that have passed two election cycles that have not been voted in? Were those the committees that you had on that?
Yeah.
So FinCom, Board of Health?
Yes, the ones that hit the board.
Can I put the last two elections?
Open space was one, I think. Was it open space?
No, uh, Cemetery.
Cemetery Commission, or...
Yeah, yeah, there's Cemetery, um, uh, Board of Health, FinCom, and Parks and Rec.
Yeah. Parks and Rec, okay.
Yeah. So, I think with our charter, we're kinda obligated to bring in...
To bring it to the people?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree, I mean, that's why you have the charter, so...
I, I don't see any other way. Yeah.
Is what it is.
Madam Chair, can we allow Whitney Freiberg from the audience to speak?
Of course.
Whitney, you can speak.
Thank you, hi.
Hi, Whitney.
I just wanted to find out if, if, uh, what you're talking about, does, does it mention anything about unopposed elections?
No.
No, okay.
If, if there was one seat and one person ran for it, that wouldn't fall, but in most of the cases on there, there were two with one people, one person running, or two with zero.
Okay, okay. I've heard in recent months, a, a couple of people, um, you know, from a couple of people who have questioned, uh, some of the elections that have been unopposed. And, um, and, you know, of course, my answer is, please, let's find somebody to run. I mean, you know, the, you know, kinda the more the merrier, I mean, if, if we don't have anybody, then that's, that's just the way it is. Uh, one of the things that was suggested, um, after I, you know, they discussed it, was the possibility of if someone is elected unopposed, is there a way that we can have them just do a term for one year, rather than, let's say, if it's a, like for, you know, some, some are for longer terms? Uh, you know, would it make sense to just do it for one year, so that they could kind of, I don't know, get, you know, get a feel for the person, you know, uh, you know, get a, because unopposed, I guess, isn't, uh, kind of, I feel all, well, I, I think part of it is that when it's unopposed, you know, they don't have the opportunity to speak with the candidates. Uh, sometimes the candidates don't go, you know, above and beyond to introduce themselves, talk about themselves, and that kind of thing. I think that's part of the, you know, the, the question that they have.
Well, Whitney, unfortunately, elections have consequences. And when somebody chooses to allow a candidate to run unopposed, the consequences of the election being held and only having one candidate in said election is that that candidate will be the elected member of the community.
Right.
So it would be unfair to a representative that chooses to serve to then limit their service based upon people that didn't wanna run.
Sure. Right. Right. And I get that, okay, I'm just, I'm just bringing, uh, you know, I'm just bringing it up, because you brought up this, uh, this topic, and I just wanted to, you know, have an answer. Um, and again, you know, my, my first answer to anybody who questions any elections or anything is, please, we welcome any candidates. And if we don't have enough candidates to run, then that's, that's just it, you know, elections here, and even voting is a, is a major issue, but we'll work through that, and we'll talk about that some more. Thank you for giving me the chance to ask that question.
Okay, is that, so that's all you got, Whitney?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Alright.
I mean, Katie.
That's okay, you can call me whatever you'd like, dear.
I'll be morning, no.
Alright, so...
We're in no rush, if you wanna take some time to digest this, or...
Yeah. That's what I mean, so I, I'm not sure where everyone feels about this, do we feel like we need some more time to think about this? Uh, or do we...
Sorry, Katie.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, when we, when our people voted this charter in, this was their intent, right? Or at least this is the intent that we're reading. With the word, as Nate pointed out earlier, that we shall then place an article and a warrant for the next town meeting. This wasn't a, you know, you may, you can think about it, or what have you, I think it's just a directive from our people when they voted the charter, that they wanna look at this and look at the possibility of whether or not it should be reconsidered as elected or appointed at the next town meeting after two failures to elect. So I think, you know, at least in my perspective, it seems straightforward that we just direct Nate to, and it seems like discussion indicates, put each of these boards as their own warrant article, and then let the people at the town meeting decide whether or not they wanna continue having these positions elected or appointed.
Alright. Do we have any other discussion do, at all with this?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion if you were to accept it.
Alright, I will see, do I hear any other discussion? I, I, hold on, Peter's on the fence about discussing.
No, I, I just, I, I don't know, I mean, they, it seems like they went through the charter pretty good. I mean, it is what it is, and it does, it's, it's in plain English, that's what they wanna do. Um, I just, I don't know if it's the right thing to do, but it is what it is. It's in the charter, it's gotta go to the people, we have to follow the charter rules.
Well, at the end, at the end of the day, Peter, we don't, when we vote on each article, we don't have to recommend.
Right.
There's this thing, we shall put it on in the article, but it doesn't say, you know, the select board shall recommend the change.
Yeah.
We can always say, you know, we recommend X, we don't recommend Y, and so forth.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not against it, I just think, I, I need to hear other people's opinions about it, you know what I mean? Um, I know my opinion, and I know Chris's opinion and your opinion, um, but, I don't know, I, I just, I hate to lose voted-in positions for the town and, and give, uh, well, I mean, I guess the select board is the one that does the appointing afterwards, so it's really not an issue. No, I just, what it is, I'm good.
Well, in my, in my opinion, the charter is the town's charter. It's everybody, it's every citizen of Hubbardston has ownership of that, of that charter. We can change it, we can amend it, who knows when it was last updated, I don't know, you know, but...
Two thousand twelve.
It's a living document, and it's gotta stay current with the time and the situation. So if we bring this question, one at a time, if you prefer, to the floor at town meeting, and we'll let the citizens of the town decide how they wanna handle it, since it's their document, to, um, you know, to update or not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
And there's a potential that even just putting this on lights a fire, and you have a, a fully contested ballot this year.
Right. The way it should be.
Yeah, people run for this, that, and the other, 'cause they don't wanna see it.
'Cause they don't wanna see it go away?
Yeah, yeah, it could very well, you know, spark some stuff, so...
Let's hope.
Alright, so are we good with discussion?
I'm good.
And can I hear some kind of motion? Heather, I believe you had one.
There was a motion on the floor.
Yeah, Heather was getting there.
I was getting there, okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we direct Nate to put together four warrant articles for the annual town meeting relative to section four, seven, one of the town charter, regarding the possible amendment of our charter with regards to the four offices, Board of Health, Finance Committee, Parks and Rec, and Cemetery Commission of a conversion from elected to appointed positions.
Alright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, we're gonna do roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And myself, I, yes. Alright, so that passed. On to the next, we have open space committee ad hoc and recreation plan update. So, yeah, I heard a little bit about this in the meeting, do you wanna kinda go over that, or?
Sure, just simply as there's not a representative of the open space committee. The open space committee is looking for a five-member ad hoc committee, three representatives, and two members of the community at large to look into updating the open space and recreation plan.
Alright. So, and I watched, you know...
Chris Monroe is raising his hand.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Hello, good evening.
How you guys doing?
I would, uh, I'd be happy to volunteer as representative for that, and I would also, if I'm not chosen, would like to see a member of the planning board on that, uh, because it, it is so important to a lot of the issues that, uh, that we're working on.
Alright, yeah, I was watching, 'cause...
I went, for the record, Christopher Monroe, uh, chair of the planning board, crime throat.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I was watching, um, the open space meetings, 'cause I couldn't make it to the last couple, unfortunately. They do have another one Thursday, which I will be able to make it to. Um, but they were talking about possibly having, uh, one from planning, one from ConCom, I believe? And I believe one select board, um, and then, was it, it was two members at large, if I'm correct, okay.
Yes.
So, and then Rick himself on there. But that would put us at six, that's, that number's not right. I think it was one at large, and Rick to, from, um, open space.
Rick Jones of the open space committee has volunteered to chair this committee.
Yeah. Okay.
But we would also be looking for representation from the select board, planning board, Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay.
Conservation, as well as at-large representation from any interested community members. It doesn't outline the number.
It doesn't say a number. So, that being said, we have Rick, and they're, and they are asking for a select board, a planning board, a Parks, a ConCom. That would be five, and then usually you want an odd number, so two members at large would make seven. I don't know how anyone else feels about all those, and if they have any two cents to add about this, but this would be an ad hoc sub-meeting. They're looking to meet like two or three times, trying to get their plans in order to present their, what is it, their seven-year plan, I believe?
Yes.
They talked about it briefly, um, when we had that open board meeting, um, last year, the, the all boards meeting.
Say, seven-year action plan, going over their vision, needs, objectives, and goals.
So, and I'd be happy to attempt to do that for, um, select board.
And I could back you up if you couldn't make, so...
Okay, yeah. Yeah, worse comes to worse, if I end up having a, a meeting on another night.
Yeah, 'cause you're a very busy person.
I try, I try to get my, my liaison lists in there as much as humanly possible.
Yeah.
If not, I watch it on YouTube afterwards, so, I try to watch them all on YouTube, but just riveting, let me tell ya.
I'm sure Heather has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Heather.
So, I was just gonna say, it looks like you're reading the memo that they're looking for us to actually establish or approve the formation of the ad hoc committee. Um, so if, if you were good with it, Katie, I'd be ready to make a motion.
I would gladly accept a motion, Heather.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we establish the open space recreation plan update ad hoc committee, um, with seven members to consist of as follows. I'd actually recommend two open space committee, one select board, one planning board, one Parks and Rec, one ConCom, and one at large, um, with the purpose of achieving the completion of the rest of the open space reg plan, which includes the present vision, needs, objectives, goals, and the seven-year action plan, all to be completed no later than September first of twenty twenty-three.
Alright, do I hear a second for that lengthy motion?
Second.
Thank you, alright, do we have any discussion on it? Seeing none, I will take a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, did anyone want to appoint somebody from the select board as? Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we have Katie serve as our representative, um, from the select board on the open space and recreation plan update ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Heather, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, will we, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And I will, yes, so. Alright, so, thank you, everyone, that one is all set, and hopefully they can, uh, get established. Um, if, Nate, you could kinda send an email to all those boards, and also Rick, to let him know how that's going,
Yes. Mm-hmm.
and maybe put a posting out for a member at large, that would be awesome. Alright, so next up, we have, um, planning board zoning bylaw amendments, um, and proposed warrant article changes. I have... I have looked through most of this and I saw that most of it was just updates of, of simple things and I did, again, listen to. Long time of, uh, planning board meetings to hear out why it was being changed. A lot of it's just, um, simple stuff. It, do you wanna explain in detail or do you want me to keep rattling on?
So the chair is here, we could let.
Oh, yes, even better, Chris can explain this.
Hello, Madam Chair, uh, Christopher Monroe, uh, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has. Uh, essentially what we are suggesting in this memo are a series of largely formatting updates to our bylaw. Uh, for example, making references general neutral, uh, making the term building commissioner and, um, building inspector consistent. Um, this is part of a larger project that we've had going on the last couple of years that, that's really been pushed forward through the hard work of, uh, Alice Liddell. And, uh, Mark Cressage, uh, who's our, our planning clerk, we've, we've hit pretty much the end of the road of it. And what we've been doing is we've been making sure that all the updates that everyone in the town's voted on, these last several years have been reflected in our official zoning bylaws. And we've also, uh, made it sure that what we have available on the website for the public is accurate. Uh, so what came out in that process is we had, uh, we had sent all of our revisions through to town council. And town council came back and said, yeah, uh, although these are formatting, they're substantive enough where they really should go in front of town meeting just to be safe. Uh, so what we did is we prepared this list of changes that we need to make to the bylaws and with, um, with two exceptions, which I'll come back to and talk about in a moment. Uh, almost all of them are essentially just formatting changes, uh, and we're making them in order to make it clearer what the original intent of the bylaws were. Um, are there any questions about that part before I go into the two substantive changes that are in them?
Nope.
Okay, so, eh, in this document, there are two substantive changes. The first one is, is we, um, we struck from the list of, uh, special permit required uses. Uh, greenhouse and we struck from it, uh, daycare and childcare center. And the reason we did that is because there is a state law, uh, it is, uh, MGL chapter forty-eight, section three. And it says we can't require special permits for those things. Uh, so because of that, we really shouldn't have it in our bylaws that we require special permits for those. Uh, since, uh, a potential applicant could just come in and say, hey. Uh, I'm gonna sue you, uh, because you can't do that and then we end up paying a bunch of money in fees and it's just not good for anybody when we can just make the change. The, um, uh, the other thing to note is that, uh, especially with the daycare provision. That rule is part of what's called the, um, the Dover amendments. Uh, and those are changes to the MGLs that were set out originally in the fifties for things of particular public importance. Uh, to avoid discrimination against churches, religious institutions, educational facilities. I went back and I tried to research when the specific revisions and the MGLs happen related to daycare and childcare centers. Uh, out of curiosity and I, I got as far back in the session laws as twenty-ten and then gave up and looking, so. This has been on, um, on the books at a state level for at least ten years, so it's about time we come around and comply. Plus, I, I really think it's doing a solid for all of the working families that we have in town. Uh, anecdotally, uh, I spoke to, um, an operator of a daycare and she has a pretty deep waiting list and doesn't believe that this would impact her business in any way, shape or form. So, uh, I don't think we're gonna be taking, uh, any food away from any businesses in town, we'll, uh, we'll just be helping people out on this.
All right, that sounds really good, Chris. Um, does anybody have any questions for Chris about any of these things? No, any discussion at all?
Well, why aren't you waving back at Cody?
Yeah. Hi, hi Cody. I know, he's going to town just waving. He's like, I could see daddy on there and everything. All right, so, uh, getting back to this, uh, hearing no discussion, um, I, anybody, um, basically, I'm looking.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, if you know what you're doing, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we direct Nate to work with legal counsel and the planning board through their public hearing process. To prepare the proposed articles, uh, for annual town meeting.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, or excuse me, any discussion on that? No, roll call?
Yes.
Peter?
Oh, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Katie, yes. All right, thank you very much.
Chris, can you please stay on if you have the time for the discussion that's coming up in a couple agenda items regarding the odor complaint from the Board of Health?
Yeah, sure. Uh, I also have one, um, uh, one more quick update, Madam Chair, if you would indulge me.
Yeah.
Uh, Adam Liddell, who is a rock star hero for the planning board from the last few years, had.
Who? We just lost him. Hold on, Chris, we just lost you completely.
He's not muted or anything.
You're not muted either.
We can't hear you.
Hold on.
I can hear him.
You can?
How well now?
Oh, there we go, okay.
Perfectly. And it's, did he say Adam Liddell?
Alice.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yep. So, uh, Alice has, uh, announced her intent to resign effective after our next meeting. It would've been the end of the month if we were able to, to hold our last meeting for substantive discussions. Uh, but, um, but the planning board would like to ask the select board to, uh, to appoint somebody to fill her position. Uh, Erica Dak, uh, who is our associate member, has suggested she would be interested in, in that position. Uh, like to be considered when the select board does its search, uh, and if the select board was to choose Erica to fill that position. Uh, the select board would also by our bylaws need to appoint somebody new to be our associate member because that position is appointed by the select board. Uh, I also want to just personally thank Alice on the record and in front of the public, uh, she's one of the hardest working people, uh, in government, uh, in, in local government. And, uh, I can tell you as the Chair of the Plan Board, there's a lot of work and none of it's particularly easy and she's really done a pretty awesome job over her years on the board.
Yeah, she's done some good work and usually comes up with some, lots of legal answers that, digging down into things that nobody else wants to dig into. But yes, we would all de- definitely like to thank her for her, uh, years on the planning board and we wish her the best. I heard she's going to babysit the grandbabies, or well, grandchild, just one right now, right? I believe, I think it's just the one.
Yes.
Yes, so, but yes, thank you, Alice. All right, um, that being said, um, we will start moving forward. The next up is, um, municipal aggregation exploration request, if I pronounced that all correctly. And I'm gonna throw that over to Nate to speak on that.
Absolutely, so municipal aggregation is when a community combines all of their aggregate, mu- aggregate electrical use. To then negotiate a better price per customer with an electrical vendor. Francois Steiger and a couple other various people throughout town, in during my first couple of weeks here, did come to me and ask about the feasibility. Of looking into municipal aggregation in Hubbardston or municipal aggregation for Hubbardston and a neighboring community. The only kind of requirement you would need is you cannot be a, uh, municipal power community. So we could work with anybody that does not have a, a power department.
So not, not Templeton, basically?
Not Templeton, not Princeton, not Paxton, not, there are quite a few that would not be eligible.
Okay.
But all we're asking this evening is to be able to look into the feasibility of having a. Agenda, oh, an agenda, a annual town meeting article, possibly moving forward with this. Basically, the, as I, in the attachment that I added to the letter that I wrote for you in your packet, it outlines the process. You need to go to annual town meeting and you need to write up a document outlining what this would mean for your community and what, what your initiatives and goals are. And you work with the Department of Utility and then you even have to go further than that and go back to town meeting. It would take probably well over a year from soup to nuts with this. But in the end, it would be saving the municipal residents money. And there are plenty of successful examples of this, even in our region. Gardner has it, I haven't looked at the list, but I know a lot of communities have done this. And I'm just respectfully asking for the opportunity to look into it for Hubbardston with Francois and anybody that wanted to participate in that exploration.
All right, so yeah, so basically it would be going to this town meeting and then if everything aligned, next town meeting before it even came close to being fruition. And like Gardner does, if you, you don't have to be in it, you can opt out if you find resident. So basically the people that are all calling around right now trying to lock in low rates, this would be locked in for you.
Yeah, I mean.
But if you choose not to use it, you could not use it and lock in somewhere else.
Now, okay, nevermind, it's, we're not even close enough to answer the question I wanted to ask.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is gonna take a while.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So if you're locked in now, by the time this came around, you probably be, wouldn't be locked in in a rate at that point in time, or you'd be getting close to being unlocked.
So is this, is this something where we, we would try to create our own aggregate with partner towns? Or is this, or is jumping onto an existing aggregate an option?
There's not a on-the-table option to do that, that does not mean one's not going to exist as we, as we explore.
Okay.
Like, but as of right now, like, this wasn't brought up by a neighboring community offering it to us. So it would be right now, we're in the driver's seat. Where could we be in a year's time after exploring? Maybe someone has already done the work, so who knows?
With, with numbers is fair buying power usually, so.
And there's a chance that this isn't feasible for us, right?
Very true. Everyone might just kinda be like, nah, you don't have enough people.
Yep.
So, um, yeah. Does anybody else have any other discussion on this one? Questions?
It's too early to even ask a question, yeah.
It's too early?
I guess, Katie, if I could, I would just say, you know, I think this is an awesome idea to look into, um, for folks at home, so this would give.
Yeah.
It essentially, I believe, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, National Grid's still involved, but they're only involved in one part of the chain, not one part.
Yeah, yes.
So we'd be able to get a lower cost for folks, it's kinda like group procurement, right? So you're grouping everyone together in the town or sometimes with other towns to try to purchase at a lower rate. It's been around for years. Um, it was very popular when it first came out. I, I think it's silly for us not to investigate this. Um, because I think giving any option to our residents to come to the table and, uh, be able to potentially help them, especially help their pockets is always helpful. Uh, I also like the fact that, well, I don't love the fact that this takes over a year to do, but I like the fact that, you know, um, we can essentially. Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can essentially bring this to the townspeople at the annual town meeting. And as we move further along the process, we could just not continue, correct?
Yep.
So there's actually no harm in bringing this to the townspeople and even having you guys, instead of doing a lot of investigation on this, move forward with doing the article. And then do the investigation as you go through the process with D O E R, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we could, we could go that route. I would kinda want to do a little bit of digging to make sure that it's not just something that we're gonna be dead on arrival with. Cause like I've been saying, we haven't really looked into anything because we wanted to get just this little bit of buy-in. From the select board before going and spending time digging around and asking questions and looking into different opportunities and companies, et cetera.
I mean, it, it's available out there now to people. I mean, I could go out and sign up with another company right now for a cheaper rate. So you're talking, so you're gonna be talking savings better than what's available now.
Yep.
So what we're, what we're talking about here in layman's terms is a volume discount, right?
Right.
If they get every resident in Hubbardston onto that, on that particular grid, we're gonna get a better rate than you over here and me over here and me over here going out on our own, so. I don't see, I don't see where there's any, where there's any harm in it, you know, we can investigate if we can get a better rate. So long as the service is equal or better than what we're getting today, I think it's kind of a no-brainer.
So I locked in at a lower rate than Gardner is locked in right now.
But Gardner has a shorter contract term.
True, and I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying that it will always be better right now, you know? Things change very quickly.
So, the rate you're at right now is better than the one National Grid gives?
Well, the one that Gardner has, they have this program in Gardner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but that's, it flip flops a lot too, like, that rate will be better than the one that I'm locked in.
So the rate is on what you're paying per kilowatt, not to, not the, uh, to get it to your house?
Yeah, per kilowatt.
Per kilowatt, right.
Gardner is twenty-one cents per kilowatt hour, I'm assuming that you're with Constellation.
Cause of the expenses.
And you're paying seventeen or something like that.
Yeah. But then if.
But she is locked in for three years, whereas the mayor of Gardner made a executive decision to do one year. Cause he was thinking if municipal aggregation would be different in three years, cause that's twenty thousand people versus one.
Yeah, exactly, so it, it changes, like.
But the transmission charge is where the problem is, it's not the electricity, right?
True, but if you're spending thirty-three cents a kilowatt.
Right.
Versus seventeen or eleven or even twenty-one, it's a huge difference.
Yeah, it's, oh, yeah, no, there's definitely a huge difference, I agree.
So especially in the winter months and if they have electric.
So you could drop your payment like twenty-five a month and that's, you add that up over a year, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
When I went from in Gardner with the municipal aggregation, we were at eleven cents for the last five years.
Really?
When we went from eleven cents to twenty-one, it was a two hundred dollar increase in one month at my house.
Wow.
Yeah, and it, it, you know, with everything kinda going wild right now, it's.
And it's not, yeah?
And I hope everything calms down, like.
That'd be nice for everybody.
All right, so let's, let's, so all we, all we're doing is setting up a, setting up a, uh, giving you the authorization to pursue this, investigate this, right? I mean, we don't have to get in the weeds.
Nope, nope.
About this tonight.
I would like a motion though.
I move we task the town administrator with investigating to pursue the municipal aggregation for Hubbardston electric ratepayers and if deemed beneficial. Drafting an article on the matter for annual town meeting consideration.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, all right, roll, uh, any discussion on that? No, roll call, Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Katie, yes. All right, has another one checked off the list. All right, annual report. Um, we need first of all, a decision for, um, dedication this year. Does anyone have a thought? Usually we dedicate the town annual report to somebody. Um, last year was, we dedicated it to the, uh, the veterans, the Vietnam veteran, um, uh, committee there. And I think the year before was Flo and the year before that was Joyce, I believe, so.
What about Alice?
Could be Alice, that would be a good one. Um, another thought is, um, um, uh, Barbara Hubbard, uh, just passed away and she's been a longtime resident and a very mover and a shaker. Um, that might be a possibility, but she passed away this year, so I don't know how anyone feels about that, um, in memory of kinda thing. Um, but Alice is definitely a good nominee as well. Um, I kinda like Alice 'cause she did a lot for the last couple of years. Um, does anybody else have any thoughts on this matter?
Alice.
You like Alice?
Yeah, I do like that.
You like that?
That's my thought.
Madam Chair, would you accept a motion?
I would gladly accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we dedicate this year's annual report to Abis, uh, yeah, try again, Alice Liddell.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion on that? All right, roll call, Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so that's good, we got that checked off, very nice, um, and well-deserved. And then we also have, um, the select board twenty-twenty-two, uh, year in review. Did everybody get a chance to read that over?
No.
No?
No.
No. Nate worked hard on that.
The annual report we're talking about?
Yes, just, just our section. Every, every, uh, department has to do one every year and, or at least they're supposed to.
I was waiting for the final version.
Oh, well.
It said draft, so I didn't.
Well, yeah, so we can look it over, so we can accept it.
It's a draft because I wasn't here for majority of twenty twenty-two.
Oh, okay. Alright, I didn't know that.
How about you, Heather? Have you read it? What are your, what are your thoughts?
I could, and Madam Chair, actually, if you would accept a motion, I would make one.
I would love to accept a motion.
I would like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, the drafted Select Board twenty twenty-two in review as our final, uh, submitted for the annual report.
Alright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, do I, do we need to discuss this at all?
No, I'll read it tonight.
How are you, Chris? Do you need a minute?
I'd like to read it before I vote on it.
Okay, hold on. We're gonna take it, we're gonna take a second.
Take a minute now to read it.
That's fine.
I can read it now.
Yep, feel free. We will, everybody take a minute.
Who's that?
Whitney, mute yourself for the love of God.
I got creeped out.
I know. Looks like you don't realize you're not muted when you're on Zoom and then all of a sudden like the kids will be talking to me and I'm like, I have not muted right now. Stop.
Yeah, that's nice, very nice.
Okay, you're good?
Spelled my name wrong again though.
Uh-oh. Oh, he just threw his pen and everything. Did you see that?
I will fix the spelling of your name.
Okay.
Nate. I think it's auto-correcting to the wrong stuff.
Is it? It might be. Alright, so we do have a motion and a second, um, whereas in discussion. So any discussion on that other than your typo of their name? Everybody else is good? Alright, we're gonna do a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Katie is a yes. Alright, there's another one checked off the list. Alright, we are down to, where are we at? Retiree healthcare slash other post-employment benefits discussion. Um, huh, yes, this one's gotta be a fun one. So I don't know if everyone checked out that initial document. I'm sure Nate will elaborate on all this fun stuff. But basically it's, we gotta start somewhere, so. If we're going to even look at anything like this, this was what, you, just the one version that you found?
This is one version of a number of several many documents that I will share with you guys over the discussions we're going to have about this. Cause I do believe this is fortunately slash unfortunately retiree healthcare slash OPEB discussion one. Of how many? Who knows? But this was brought up because as we all know, Sandy Nathan has resigned from her position as treasurer collector to go and take a position with another community. The kind of balancing everything out, the pay versus life ratio and all that stuff evens out, but the major difference was that this community and many other communities offer retiree healthcare, which is obviously retiree benefits for like health insurance to retired former staff members. That's something we obviously would like to provide to people, but it does come with a lofty cost. And on top of being relatively, or not even relatively, on top of being expensive, the state since I wanna say two thousand sixteen, maybe a little bit before, has made communities that offer retiree benefits put money into a OPEB, an other post-employment benefits account, which basically takes all of your liabilities, does a equation for them and determines how much you would need in said account to fund your liabilities as of that moment. The communities that are already doing it have until, Heather, do you know exactly when? Twenty thirty, let's call it twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, to fit, to completely fund their large multimillion dollar OPEB trust funds. And that's something that if we're even going to consider offering retiree healthcare, we would have to look into ourselves. As I stated on the agenda for the chair, I don't think there's an action item with this right now. But it's definitely something that we should be looking into. Heather did mention that she wanted to bring it up as a agenda item, so I will pass to her, but that's just a little bit on that. This is, this is not even like the main conversation yet.
No, this is just kind of scratching at it. So Heather, would you like that?
Sure.
Go for it.
I would love to. Thanks, Katie. So I asked Nate to put this on as he previously mentioned a few minutes ago. So we just had an employee who actually left, who's not probably too, too far off from retirement and she left. That would actually give her the opportunity to have this. So generally speaking, what OPEB covers is usually retiree health insurance. And it could be whatever percentage. It could be a fifty fifty split, sixty forty split, whatever the split is. But at least it gives employees the benefit when they retire of having the opportunity to be part of a health plan. Um, and it's a benefit that we're seeing more and more communities jump on. It's one of those statutes that came out that is actually a local option, right? So it's not something everyone has to do. You actually have to opt into it. Um, I was able to find the document. It was from a couple of years ago. Nate, do you have to remember of that document, how many of the three fifty-one municipalities were not, currently had not accepted OPEB?
We are in the extreme minority. I don't have an exact number, but we are in the very.
It was like three dozen or less, right? Something like that. So, and that was a couple of years ago and other communities have jumped on since. Um, so one of the things, one of the reasons to bring this up as well is, you know, we already know we have, we're not always the highest paying community. We don't always offer, you know, the most competitive benefits with other communities. But I think we're gonna start seeing that more and more with our full-time employees as they're getting older, we're, we're gonna be losing them. They're gonna go to another town to retire instead of retiring from the town Hubbardston because they're missing out on this benefit. Um, some folks may seem to think this is a, you know, just a small benefit, but, you know, people switch jobs over this, right? As we've seen, that's not the first time I've seen someone switch, um, employers just to be able to have access and provide for their families after they retire. So this is something, you know, I know we're already facing financial challenges and everything else, but when we're looking at our employees, we're looking at retention, this is something we need to keep in the back of our minds and continue having conversations about and seeing, you know, at what point does it make sense to be putting this before the townspeople at town meeting to look at adopting and going this direction.
Alright, so basically just, we're gonna keep digging at this for a while and I'm assuming Nate, you're gonna bring us some more information and keep this kind of on a old business note?
Yeah, I'll keep it on old business. It's a.
It's bad timing, that's all I can say.
Well, but it's not gonna.
We're getting hit from every side right now. It's a taxpayer.
And this might not be something we do now. It's something we could.
I mean, it's a great idea, but I mean, I'm thinking, you know, I'm just going off me personally and probably everybody in the town. We're getting hit from all angles right now.
Absolutely.
And, uh, it doesn't look any brighter on the next year or two. So, I mean, if everybody's willing to take the leap, I mean, whatever, it is what it is.
So, I, I think this is gonna take some time before we can figure it out anyway.
I like the idea. I mean, I, I, I'm all about benefits and I like the idea. Um, I'm just a little confused, but we'll figure that out in the future. Maybe not.
It was only brought up because it is pertinent at this time.
I, I understand, yes. And I do agree with that because we, yes.
It's very fresh.
And it should, another thing that should have been tackled ten years ago, probably.
Uh, it kind of, a little bit was, not maybe, not maybe ten years ago, but.
Alright.
I don't know when the timeframe was, but it was attempted and.
It was looked at, okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's enticing for somebody to know that they're gonna be taken care of after they retire, cause there's a lot of people that really.
Well, healthcare is, yeah, expensive and, yeah, it's, it, it's not like you don't ever just, eh, I don't need that.
Right, right. You're not eighteen anymore, you know, right?
Yeah, like I can walk it off, it's fine.
Yeah.
It doesn't work that way.
No.
Certain things just can't walk off when you're older.
Excellent.
Alright, so keep this on, uh, old business and seeing that. Any other discussion on that? No, then we will move on to old business and our first thing of old business is order complaint discussion. Um, yeah, basically, we're gonna have a discussion.
We have both Bowie, Damon, the Chair of the Planning Board, the interim police chief. So I felt after discussing with Peter last week that this was a good time to bring this up. There are a number of balls in the air that. And I guess we will just discuss this, uh.
Nobody wants to touch it. It's like a hot potato.
Bowie, Damon, do you have any questions? Like now that we were here just, we're having a conversation with you. I know I told you that we would, we would open this conversation up. We cannot step on the toes of the Board of Health, but we are willing and have you here tonight to have a conversation if you would like.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Uh, Damon, go ahead. Were you gonna say something? Oh, yeah, I, I just, uh, joined the, um, conversation or tonight's agenda. Um, because I saw, you know, I just saw it on the agenda. So I, I didn't actually have anything that I really wanted to say, although, um, you know, I am gonna rotate our, uh, the crops in a little different way this year, uh, so that might help. But, uh, I was literally just joining because I saw it on the agenda, so.
Alright.
I wasn't sure if you wanted anything from me, so I was just joining in case you had any questions. Yeah, and also I, I'm really just here to listen. Um, I still have yet to respond to the Planning Board letter. I mean, the, um, Board of Health letter. So, um, I've kind of been advised not to speak too much and, um, really just try to take the temperature and see what's going on after sort of getting such a threatening letter.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I could be recognized for a moment?
Uh, yes, sir.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, so Christopher Monroe, uh, Granger Road, Chair of the Planning Board. Uh, so I just wanted to, uh, to clarify for the record here. Uh, the Planning Board did not send, uh, any kind of letter. And, uh, the Chair of the Board of Health reached out to the Planning Board uh, at some point in October and asked if we would like to provide input in the process. Uh, and we said we would, uh, but then we were never consulted again after that. Uh, and I only found out about this letter, um, when it was given to me by the town administrator. So, uh, to the extent that the, uh, the letter makes claims or threats uh, against anybody's special permit, uh, that's not the Planning Board. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, the Planning Board only received two odor complaints. And both of the special permits have written into them the process for addressing odor, addressing odor complaints. Uh, and that process is after three credible complaints. Uh, and we had debated that language before we put it in there. Credible complaints are complaints in writing from somebody who is identified. Uh, they're, they're not just anonymous, like, hey, did you smell that? But actual formal credible complaints, uh, we would schedule a, a public hearing under the standards of public hearing sufficiently advertised so that everybody could be there uh, to, to speak as to their rights and as to any of the assertions that are made. Uh, and that the purpose of that public hearing would be to work towards some kind of mitigation step or some kind of compromise. Uh, the language doesn't say anything about revocation of a special permit. Now, I just wanted to clarify, I'm, I'm not making a comment as to what the Board of Health's authority is because the Board of Health has separate statutory authority from the Planning Board. Uh, although that authority does, does not contain the right for them to revoke one of our special permits. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that that was appropriately reflected in the record and that the position of the Planning Board was clear on this.
So you can see just why I'm a little concerned. They may not have the right to revoke this special permit, but if somebody decides something smells and then thousand dollar a day fines can start dropping on the head of a business that's just getting off the ground. Um, I've gone back and watched all the Board of Health meetings and, um, it's quite a sight, you know, it's, it's, it seems like there is, uh, you know, they have their own agenda and their own momentum. So I'm, um, I'm, we're, I'm still just crafting sort of my response to them and, um, I wanna be sensitive to the concerns and the smell. But there is, you know, what needs to be said, you know, there are a lot of crazy ideas going around in the Board of Health meetings about steps we could take to mitigate the odor. And, and none of them are really applicable except for what Damon mentioned, which is some tighter crop rotation. With, um, you know, uh, we just worked through our, our SOPs, our operating procedures this last year. So things will be running much more smoothly this year. Um, we were just, you know, getting our toes in the dirt, so to speak. And, um, you know, so we are gonna provide a plan to them to, like, you know, to try and help a little bit, but, um, you know, with outdoor marijuana, um, there is a smell. I think the municipalities that don't wanna smell outdoor marijuana, uh, I believe they only allow indoor marijuana with very strict smell. And that's, I guess, that's all for now. And I, I also would like to say, I, I sat in on the Board of Health meeting last week. I went and, um, I actually spoke to the whole board for, um, just ten or fifteen minutes and sort of listened to the whole meeting. And, um, also offered the volunteer services of my crew for what it sounded like many Board of Health, um, like projects and different cleanings and stuff that, you know, they have trouble getting commitment, commitments for and, you know, I, I just wanna help. I mean, I'm here in the interest to, um, you know, be a part of the community, be a financial benefit to the community and move forward and, you know, just support my family just like everybody else. So, um, you know, I'm gonna, I'll give them my response soon. It's not gonna contain too many bells and whistles because there's really not that much that can be done. And, um, uh, I guess that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you Bowie and Damon, both of you, and Chris for speaking. Um, does Peter, Chris, Heather?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Chris.
Uh, if, if I may, I, I would like to direct the Select Board and, and the public um, to the fairly extensive testimony that was presented at the special, um, special permit hearings for, uh, for, uh, both of these permit holders back when they were both applicants. Um, and specifically the discussion that was held by the Board. Because yes, growing, growing marijuana outdoors is a naturally odoriferous process. Uh, and our expert, um, working with their expert, uh, came up with what we believed were, um, some sensible restrictions, uh, regarding the, uh, the types of marijuana that can be grown. For, for example, uh, we specified, um, and, and forgive me if I'm forgetting the scientific name here, but that, uh, specific top shelf super scum varieties would not be grown. Uh, and some other reasonable steps regarding, uh, the placement of, of fencing and landscaping and distance from the neighbors. Uh, so there, there. Uh, so there, there is some pretty extensive testimony, um, and discussion about that in the record that, uh, that is worth checking out about this. Um, ultimately, at the end of the day, the majority of the Board, uh, decided that the, um, the voters specifically elected for the outdoor cultivation of marijuana in the town, uh, and because they had done so, uh, as the Board, we were compelled to grant the decision even though there was potential, um, for, for some odors to be produced by the facility. But farming in one way or another produces odors, uh, be it from spreading manure or what else, so, uh, the standard we had wasn't no odors, it was reasonable.
And then to that, to that effect also, I, um, I did plant, uh, Tom and Jassy's, you know, four hundred foot hedge to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars, which, you know, will grow over the next few years, and that was planted as a potential smell buffer of some kind. Um, and, you know, I'm gonna be planting some more trees on, on, uh, John's Auto's side of the property and, um, you know, we're, we're just getting started here and we're also, um, just sort of, like I said, working through these operating procedures. Our planting schedule, our harvest schedule, um, this is not a sign, we are not in a warehouse here, this is not a, you know, we, we're not a contained warehouse scientific grow, we're, this is crop, like, we're, we're farming here. So, um, I'm very sensitive to the complaints of the people on High Street, um. I've, I've had a few people on High Street tell me that they smell, you know, o- I, other people's marijuana that's growing in their backyard as well. Um, and I know a lot of people around town, most of the contractors I've hired, um, to renovate the property and bring the, bring the business to life. Uh, I mean, ever, uh, everybody's growing marijuana in this town, I hate to break the news to everyone, but I know quite a few people who are, cause a lot of them have done work for me and a lot of them have, you know, have, we've talked about it extensively, everybody in the Commonwealth is allowed twelve plants. And, um, you know, twelve plants alone is, um, very stinky, so it's, um, you know, I, I, it's, I, I guess, I mean, I guess that's all I'll say, you know, the, I, we need some time for potentially Tom and Jassy's trees to grow. We, you know, we just put them in at five feet, um, and, you know, eventually we're gonna get through the, the renovation of the property, um, for the retail store, and that's also gonna involve beautifying that whole entire lot. Um, with pretty extensive landscaping as well, um, if we can get there, and, you know, I think all these things will lead in, um, hopefully the direction of just more trees surrounding my property and masking things, if people think that will help, I don't. I think, um, I think it's gonna smell a little bit for three months, and I would also like to mention that, um, you know, there have been no plants actively since about September twenty-fifth in the ground, and, um, even the indoor grow facilities, I have many friends who manage many of the big facilities around, they are doing odor complaints year round. So, um, it's an ongoing thing, and I realize this is very sensitive for some people, but we are, you know, essentially completely odor free for seventy percent of the year. Whereas, you know, all other farms are operating three sixty-five, you know, the, the, the country hen is operating three sixty-five, like, we're closed down right now. So, um, I don't know, it's, that's something to keep in mind, um, just if people think that indoor cannabis is the answer, it's not. I'm not sure if anyone's been to Colorado or California in the last five or ten years, but, you know, if you drive around, uh, lot, you know, Los Angeles, those are all indoor grow facilities with multimillion dollar odor abatement systems installed and all you smell is marijuana as well.
All you gotta do is go to certain parts of Fitchburg.
Yeah, Route Two.
Yeah, and I, I'd also like to mind that, uh, to note that even over in Berry, you know, in some of the surrounding towns, there's extensive hemp fields as well, um, there's a lot of minor cannabinoid hemp grown for a lot of different reasons, and that is a USDA commodity crop. Anybody can grow it anywhere, and there is absolutely no difference in smell or really sight. Visual recognition of the two plants at this point for the stuff that they're growing for CBD that's also allowed. I've driven through Berry and been, also smelled cannabis everywhere, and I know all the farms that are there, and it's mostly the hemp that you smell there. So I would just also like to throw that out there, the hemp smells as well and it's allowed everywhere.
Alright, do we have any other discussion?
I, I have a question, I don't know if I'm gonna be out of line asking this question, but how do we know the smells from his farm that these people are complaining about? How do we know it's not a neighbor to, next to the person, one of the, let's say a complainant on High Street? I mean, how do they know?
They, yeah, I, I, you can say the same thing, the obvious answer would be the pot farms, that's the obvious answer.
Of course, but how do they know?
I.
Unless they know the prevailing winds that day and which way they're blowing and this and that, you know what, do you follow me? I don't wanna get into a discussion, but.
I, yeah, I know.
That's my feeling, is do they have sound proof that it's coming from that farm? No, they don't, so, but I don't wanna get into anything with the other Board either, but, um, that's my feeling on it. I mean, that's, they're the easy answer is they're the ones, you know what I mean, so, that's all I have to say.
Cause I mean, I do know a lot of people do grow in this town, I don't know anybody on High Street that grows per se, or at least I would never wanna say any names on the, on the, shh, or names and out anyone, um.
I know, I know three people on High Street that are, that grew last year and they grew big full twelve plant plots, yeah.
And they stink.
Yeah, they, they.
I live on, I live on the High Street and that is an absolute for sure, absolute.
And like I said, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, if you all wanna throw people under the bus, go ahead.
No, I'm not.
But nobody said any names anyway, but besides the fact that it's.
No, I just, you know, that's, that's all I wanna say.
And I don't wanna make light of people that are having issues, our residents that are having issues with this smell, because uh, certain people smells bother more than others, like the pot smell, I smell it, I, it doesn't bother me that much.
Doesn't bother me.
Um.
But everybody's different.
Yes, everybody is different and everybody also sm- just like eating cilantro, some people it tastes like soap, some people it tastes good, you know, it's, it's one of those, it's subjective, so it's hard to, and I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, it, this is, this is gonna be a tough road for, until we can get everybody either.
But where were these people when they, this, at town meeting when this stuff was approved, I, this was before my time, so, um, that's my question, my next question is, where were they during the meetings?
Um, some of them were here, some of them sat on, and I'm not saying that with people that were on complaints, but, um, one of the members that were on the Planning Board actually lives on High Street and wrote the, most of that by law. Um, and I'm not saying they're the ones complaining, I don't know who complained, and I would never even guess who complained.
Yeah, no. So.
Um, but yeah, so there's, there's residents and some of them sit on boards and committees, and they were in these meetings, you know, they, they were, I don't. The whole thing is, is, no offense, are by law to put a pot farm in the center of town, and that was my question to begin with, I find insane, why would you wanna put something that's like restricted to the commercial district in the center of town? But my answer was, because if we put it on the outskirts, it would be too easy to be, you know, become a target for crimes and things like that, and I'm like, it's a pot farm, they're gonna have all the stuff, but that's getting in the weeds and stuff, but anyway, that's, I, I don't think it should be in the commercial district, I think we don't have enough room in the commercial district, so why would we put, um, you know, only allow pot farms that need plenty of space in our little tiny commercial district, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, yeah, how many farms do you have spreading manure in the commercial district?
Ex- exactly, oh, people would lose their mind if we had, yeah.
Of, of course, so what are we, what are we talking about, I mean, that's one of the bridge, right, I mean.
Anyway. We're just, yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're getting in the weeds here of nothing, so.
Right, nothingness, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, Chris, sorry.
Uh, I, I would, um, without making any kind of statement about any possible concurrent authority that the Board of Health has. The residents, they do deserve, uh, a, a right to be heard, um, but I do believe that they should be
Agreed, yes.
Heard in a way like what was expressed in the, the special permit where there's an actual public hearing where all the parties get fair notice. Um, to, to department holders' statements, uh, that they weren't formally given notice of this meeting and, um, I wasn't formally given notice of this meeting, I just happened to be here because I had something else on the agenda. Uh, and if we were to have some kind of real stakeholder discussion about this, I think we need to go into it with reasonable expectations. But I also think we need to do it right, and the Board of Health is an elected body, uh, they can, they can choose to do whatever they want that is within their legal authority, and I think there's some debate potentially here of what is within their legal authority, but that's, uh, that's for the permit holders and the Board of Health to figure out with their respective attorneys, not us. Uh, but I would suggest that, uh, separate from that process, it, it would be worth having, uh, some form of meaningful stakeholder exchange here where everybody gets a fair opportunity to talk as was intended in the drafting of the special permits.
Okay. Uh, my question to you for that would be, would that be the Planning Board's department, or would that fall under the Select Board at this point?
Yes. Under the special permits, um, the, the triggering event is three credible complaints.
Yeah.
Um, to the Planning Board that are received by either the Planning Board or the Board of Health. Uh, and I can say that none of the complaints that were sent to the Board of Health were shared with us. So it never triggered us to have that public hearing or engage in that kind of stakeholder discussion.
So much for trust.
Uh, and, uh, I, I believe we are more than capable of doing that in a way that is prompt and professional and serves all the stakeholder interest here.
But the Board of Health needs to get a hold of you and.
Well, I, I think maybe, uh, maybe Christopher, not trying to put anything on you, but if a letter is drafted to the Board of Health requesting, um, uh, the three complaints, so you can kick this in gear, would help you?
I will certainly ask for them on behalf of the, uh, the Planning Board, uh, I don't know if those were shared with the permit holders yet, um, they, they were orders, could.
Right.
They were requested, um, Damon actually did respond to the Board of Health and required, made a FOIA request for the letters. I was in the Board of Health meeting and, um, when Kathy said out loud that, uh, she didn't feel comfortable releasing the complaints, so.
She, she asked to. And I did let her know that, that she had to release public reformation, that she could redact things like phone numbers and emails, but I did speak with the Board of Health Chair about how anybody that either wrote into the Board of Health or spoke at a public meeting that they did need to release the names and statement of those individuals.
Okay, so Christopher has, um, what he needs probably, I mean, you just gotta crank out a letter, I guess, to the Board of Health to get this rolling, I guess. Something's gotta happen here because it's.
Well, it seems like all parties kinda need to converge and be notified to be able to speak and work through this.
Mm-hmm.
It, I mean, this is not the forum.
Nope.
Uh, for this.
But we had to get something rolling, we had to do something, so.
And the complainants aren't here, they weren't notified, you know, it's, so, yeah, um, Chris, do you wanna kinda start taking this ball back into your court where it belongs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to the, um, to the Board of Health. Uh, once again, I, I'm not making any, any comment on any specific concurrent jurisdiction that they may have.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, or, or, excuse me, that, that they do have. Um, but, uh, but yeah, if, if the Planning Board was in possession of three credible complaints, we would absolutely schedule the public hearing as outlined in the special permits.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, I've actually, um, this recently came up in a discussion between myself and the, um, the Planning Board Clerk, uh, and I asked him to go back and look through the emails, uh, for the Planning Board, because we were in a time of transition when this was happening, uh, to see if there were perhaps any complaints that we had missed, but to the best of my knowledge, there's still just the two that we received, which did not meet the threshold.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did have a discussion here, but it was for people that reached out to us directly, and Damon and Bowie, you know, did come, but yeah, I believe that this is kind of beyond our scope for what we are, yeah, supposed to do and should be put back into Planning Board.
Yep, I agree.
Alright, is there any other discussion on this, or are we?
Yeah, I, I'd like to just say that, you know, Bowie had reached out to me as the Chairperson of the EDC and so I've, I've had a couple of conversations with him and he shared with me that the meeting that he attended, the, uh, Board of Health meeting, uh, this past one, uh, he felt positive, uh, and, and thought that it was a, a good meeting, and I would just like to kinda keep that positivity as that, you know, our mindset moving forward. Um, and so, uh, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Whitney. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the next item.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you Bowie, thank you Damon, and thank you Chris for hanging out and answering questions.
Madam Chair, if you have nothing else for me, I'm going to, uh, go take over childcare duties.
I, I don't think we, go take over, just go help your wife.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Alright, good night.
See you later.
Me too, I'm gonna sign out, but I'm not gonna do childcare, I'm gonna have a glass of wine.
Alright, thank you Whitney for hanging out, I appreciate it.
Is that it?
Good night, thank you so much.
Sid, Madam Chair, since we last spoke, there is an additional action item under dispatch contract discussion.
Okay, alright, so that's next, which is, uh, dispatch, uh, contract discussion, so what is the additional, cause, go for it.
So, did Tony send you guys an email today with a legal document attached to it? Does that ring a bell to anyone?
Probably, hold on, I, it's been a very long day with all kinds of twists and turns, let me look.
It has, I started the day sick.
Yeah, I know, everything was like, it's been crazy all day, people started out six, uh, sick and everything else, alright.
Heather, did you get a joint representation email from Tony?
What was the?
It was KP Law sending us a letter to announce that they need the Select Board to sign a joint representation letter because they also represent Rutland. I will, I will open it.
I know it, yeah, I got it.
I'm not seeing the D.
You're done? Neither do I.
I got it. Yeah, she sent it out this morning.
What time?
I mean, I got a Select Board meeting this evening.
It's attached to one, it's.
Which, you know, morning smell, I got a Zoom meeting for what's in weather.
It's attached to Tony, she, it's attached to one of those emails.
Which one?
Let me go back now.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it says confidential, good afternoon.
Okay, hold on one.
What time?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's right here, I don't know what's. Uh, it was.
I'm not seeing.
Neither mine.
It was sent out, um, Monday, January third, oh, January thirtieth.
Oh, wait, no.
No.
No, that's not right.
No.
I'm not seeing it.
I'm not seeing it.
I'm not either, so.
Okay.
No.
Sorry.
When, as.
It's right here.
As you guys had asked me to do, I sent the contract to Legal.
Yes.
They have not reviewed it yet because they represent both us and Rutland.
Parties. Yes.
So they need the Select Board to sign a letter stating that they are okay with the fact that they represent both us and Rutland. That letter came in today, Tony had noted that she would send it over, I will check in and send it to you.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna be in a holding pattern on that then?
I would like to not be in a holding pattern on that, but whereas.
Okay, so is it asking us, go ahead Heather?
So. So generally what's happening here with joint representation, right, is the fact that KP Law also represents Rutland, so the problem becomes is, and Nate, hopefully you can refresh our memory, cause I do not recall, but depending on what our specific question was, right, if you're ever looking for an interpretation that might be, yeah, not in the best interest of the hosting community, then we would have an issue with them reviewing it because, you know, they, they can't really give an opinion that would be contrary to one of the town's best interests, right? So if we were just looking for interpretation, do you remember what the question was Nate?
The question was for that, that they just look over it because we were uncertain about how the timelines were lining up, we were uncertain about some of the contractual terms regarding the, regarding the time, it was all about. It was all about the time and how long the contract was and that things didn't line up. Cause some sections had one year and other sections had three years and. And we also had never had our own legal counsel review this document. And it was a, it's a legally binding document that you guys were about to sign, that you guys will eventually sign likely as a executive body. So it's important that that is checked by Legal. I will open the letter and read it into the record.
Okay, so is it basically, my question is, is it saying that we know that they're doing both sides or is it something like. We're gonna have this member of our board, you know, staff do Rutland and this member of our staff take care of Hubbardston.
That is what's happening.
Okay.
And that was happening before.
Okay.
Dear members of the Select Board, you have a bringing up of this. My apologies for this.
No, it's sometimes things, it could've went into spam or.
Yeah. I know I read it today. Chair's going on. It's green.
Dear members of the Select Board, you have requested that our office provide advice and assistance regarding. The review of an intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Hubbardston and the Town of Rutland for the Joint Operations of Public Service, the IMA. As you may know, KP Law PC also serves counsel to the Town of Rutland. Our relationship with the Town of Hubbardston and the Town of Rutland creates interests that require disclosures pursuant to the rules of professional conduct of the Massachusetts Bar. Which mandate that we obtain the express permission of the appointing authority of each of our clients before we can represent the other. The purpose of this letter is to make such disclosure and to request that you determine whether you will permit such representation. In addition, while the State Ethics Commission has determined that KP Law PC and its individual attorneys are not municipal employees pursuant to the Conflict of Interest law. We provide this letter to dispel any appearance of a conflict on the firm's behalf in this matter. Multiple representation disclosure. The representation of multiple clients is regulated under the Massachusetts Rules of Professional Conduct. The relevant provision, Rule 1.7, states that an attorney may not represent multiple clients if the interests of one client are directly adverse to those of another client. Or if his representation of one client may be materially limited by his responsibilities to another client or his own interests. If however, the attorney reasonably believes that the representation of either client will not be adversely affected and each of the client's. Consent after consultation, the attorney may represent the clients in such situation, so we can see where this is going. Determination, it is our belief that our position as Town Counsel for the Town of Rutland. For the purposes and under condition described in this letter does not create a concurrent conflict of interest. And will not affect the exercise of our independent professional judgment on behalf of the Town of Hubbardston in relation to the IMA or generally as Town Counsel. The only risk I would note would be in the event that discussions over the IMA or any matter related to the IMA break down between the parties. To the point where one party seeks legal redress from the other. Under these circumstances, KP Law PC would cease representing all parties with respect to the IMA. So. It is however, for your determine, it is however for you to determine whether our representation of the Town of Rutland as Town Counsel will. Be likely to adversely affect our ability to exercise independent professional judgment on behalf of the Town of Hubbardston. Accordingly, I request that you consent our representation of the Town of Hubbardston notwithstanding the firm also serving as Town Counsel to the Town of Rutland. With regards to review of the intermunicipal agreement for joint operations of public service between the Town of Hubbardston and the Town of Rutland. Should you consent, I ask that you sign the enclosed determination. Thank you, and that is signed Brian Mazur, who is our contracts and legal, our contracts, legal attorney.
All right, so basically they're saying they can do both sides as long as we decide.
As long as we don't sue them and they don't sue us.
Well, if we decide to get out of the IMA, then they're like, yeah, we're all done.
So, when this happens. And a particular firm represents two local communities. Doesn't, doesn't said firm. Have an obligation to, to, to have another, a, a, a different firm look at the document, to look at the. I mean, I feel like this is a KP Law issue, right? They're, they're the ones who are representing both. Communities, they should have a, they should have a plan B for something when this arises, I mean, Heather, can you speak to this Heather? I mean, it seems to me they should have a plan B if they know they're representing two local communities that might wanna do business together someday. Why don't they have a partner firm that, that takes on this type of situation for them and they reciprocate for another firm that. Might do it when they get in this position.
So if we were to say to Nate, hey, find us someone else to work with us on this so there's no potential conflict, he could call KP Law and they're likely. Going to give us a referral to a different firm. So they do do that, the problem you run into is multifold, right? First of all, we have a certain arrangement with KP Law, so we pay X dollars per hour. When you go outside of that, you have to pay, pay special counsel and sometimes, you know, I was seeing as high as a hundred and fifty plus dollars per hour more. Than what the current rate was. Um, unfortunately, you know, with the municipal firms, I think they do a lot of, everyone shares things in tabletop, right? Everyone opines on stuff, so they don't really have the ability to separate the cases or separate the towns. Because a lot of times they're all working in the same direction, so every now and then when this just come up, and I assure you this does come up. They kind of run into, oh crap, now what do we do? So, I mean, I guess in their opinion and what we're looking at here is we're just looking at the interpretation of the dates. I don't think, I mean, we're not currently in a position where we're looking to run away from Rutland, we're just looking for ambiguities to be cleared up. Entertainingly enough, since KP is the council of records for the Town of Rutland, there's a probability that they actually were involved in writing the contract that now has ambiguities. So it's gonna be partially entertaining to ask them to see if they can rectify. The ambiguities in the contract that they may very well have had a hand in writing. But I, I hear what you're saying KP, it's, it's crazy, but it is, I mean, there's probably only, I don't know, maybe half a dozen. Large firms in Massachusetts that do municipal law. So, and they often run into this, right, because they all do work for multiple communities. IMAs, the intermunicipal agreements are becoming more and more popular. And everything's good as long as, you know, there's no divorce in sight. Once, once everyone wants to go through divorce, the attorneys all say, oh, no, 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 we're out of this. But good news, I don't think that's where we're at, I think we're just looking for clarification on the ambiguity, so. I mean, in my mind, I don't love it, but I'm inclined just to move forward and. To, um, consent to their joint representation.
Yeah, I'm kind of inclined to, the same with Heather, I don't, I don't like it either, but I, I'm sure the firm is big enough that they'll have. X guy on this side and X guy on this side.
And I, I think the wording we had questions with was has been on all the previous contracts to this date.
Yeah, so.
So.
It needs to kinda.
You know what I mean? Not, doesn't mean it's right, but.
No, I'm just saying.
But we're challenging, to Heather's point, we're challenging wording that KP Law wrote.
We don't know that.
In their contract.
We don't know if they wrote.
And then we're expecting them to represent us against the contract that they wrote.
Yeah.
Potentially, potentially, because we don't, how long has, uh, Hubbardston been in an IMA agreement with Rutland? Does anybody know that off the top of their head? Probably like fifteen, yeah, more than one more contract.
Fifteen years, so somewhere around there.
I don't like it. I think KP Law needs to do something for us. I think this situation should be in our contract with them. You say it happens, you say it happens more often than not, I mean, you know.
Well, if there's.
There's, why isn't there, why isn't there some sort of workaround?
Why won't it just be unique, maybe I'm the factor that's the problem?
I don't understand what you just said.
I said, maybe I'm just the commonality, right? Maybe the problem is take Heather out of the equation and you won't have any, uh, IMA disputes. No, I mean, we can, we can always direct Nate to contact them and just say, hey, you know, thank you for sending this, but we feel more comfortable having. A third party as special counsel, just take a quick look at this for us, just to make sure that everything's clean and, uh, can you give us a. Referral to a different law firm?
I would like to remind everybody at the table that our Select Board legal line is not looking pretty.
Is, no, and that's.
Yeah, I mean.
And how much do you think them take, an outside firm, taking a quick looksie at this to pick at it?
Three fifty an hour, so seven, seven hundred bucks, a thousand dollars?
I mean, we can, we can limit them, we can give parameters, we can say, listen, here's our specific questions. Or our only questions we want you to take a look at, we want you to take a one class to make sure there's nothing, um, that we shouldn't be signing on this. And then part number two is, take a look at the terms of the agreement that are ambiguous, im- ambiguous, helping.
Ambiguous.
Uh, ambiguity.
Yeah.
You would, ambiguity, sorry. Do you do when I see the word then?
Don't worry, I can't say it either, so. None of us can.
Ambiguity.
Yeah, I know, there you go, Peter said it.
I mean, we can give Nate direction to say, you know, we'd like to have an outside firm as special counsel, look at this. We'd like to cap the cost of taking a look at this at no more than, you know. Five hundred dollars and if we're unable to get that done for under five hundred dollars, then we should sign the, um.
We didn't even have five hundred dollars for Christ's sake.
Well. Peter, you were sitting there in those meetings, what's your thoughts on looking at that?
I was, and, and my, my question is, what are we questioning, I forget what, what, what part of the new one we're questioning? The new contract, Nate.
I believe it was strictly the.
Dates, right?
Dates.
Yeah.
Contract dates?
Yeah, 'cause in one spot it says three years, but then in another spot it said every year.
Yeah, the number four under section one says, the contract will be reviewed, updated and signed by all member communities every three years.
And then there's a spot that says every year it needs to be re-signed.
And then number one says, contract date will be July first through June thirtieth each year.
Yeah.
So those two items. And then number two says, the contract will be automatically renewed each July first, which is fine.
But I don't understand.
So number one and number four on that.
Yeah. But I, I don't know, I think KP Law can fix that though, if we specifically like, dude, this doesn't make sense, like, this is, like. Whether, regardless if they wrote it or not, it needs to be text.
So, number one, it, number one in this new contract was in the contract of two thousand eighteen. Okay, so there's no change in that. Doesn't mean it's right, I mean, it doesn't, you know. July first, automatically renew, that's in the old contract. It's in a new contract, there's no change in verbiage in that. The only thing that's changed is number four, the contract will be reviewed, updated and signed by all member communities every three years.
Doesn't make any sense if you're doing it every year.
Well, I don't think what the contract says is really the discussion here, I mean, what, what the discussion is, should we have KP Law, who represents two communities. You know, giving us advice on the same contract they're giving the other community advice on, I don't think they should. I think it's a conflict of interest, I'm surprised we don't have something written in our contract with them. That stipulates when this does happen, we have, we have a workaround solution. But, um, you know, I think a thousand dollars is. Small change to pay, even though we don't have any change, to get a impartial third party firm. Who doesn't have a skin in the game to make sure everything's copasthetic, not that KP Law wouldn't do the same thing, but it's just not, it's just. Doesn't pass the smell test for me.
Yeah, 'cause it would only be once to, in Chris's, on Chris's side, you know, like, we're only having somebody outside do one thing. It's not like we're going to hopefully be reaching out to them multiple times on this matter once it's solved. Other than, you know, the following year, if we have to have it done again because we find stuff we don't like that they slipped in. Or not slipped in, but rewrote, you know what I mean? But it, again, it would, it would be why, it's just this year it just sucks for spending more money on legal. It's just, ah!
Like, this could even be a case of that Rutland didn't send it to Legal. Cause they were not familiar with this document when, when I sent it to them.
And, and, but, like I said.
That doesn't, that doesn't make me feel any better about the situation.
The last.
What, you didn't like that one?
All I can say is the last meeting we had banging out this contract. They were gonna bring it to their legal, which was KP Law, and have it looked at. And then prior to it just showing up on your desk, okay, for signature, they were supposed to send it to us to look at it. So we could bring it to KP Law and have it looked at.
I don't think it's fit to anybody.
So.
I honestly. If I were to guess, I don't think it's been to anybody. Like a see, that seeking suspicion in the back of your mind that's always there, that's like, hmm.
Can't we reach out to the administrator and see if he sent it to KP Law for review and then we'll know.
They have an interim administrator.
I mean, the, the run, guy that runs the communication. I mean, whatever, it doesn't matter at this point, I mean.
For crying out.
If we're looking for some, we have to cover our tail, I do agree with that.
Yeah.
Is what it is, spend the money.
All right, so no motion.
Uh, well, no, there's, I didn't, no one's made a motion, is there a motion?
Can't you, KP Law can't tell you whether they looked at it for them?
This one representative that we've been working with said he had never seen it, that's all I have.
Yeah, it doesn't mean somebody else didn't see it, correct.
Sure. All right, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, offer a motion.
All right, let's entertain your motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we direct Nate to contact KP Law for an outside referral for special counsel for. The very specific issue of reviewing the ambiguity with regards to dates in the IMA. With the Town of Rutland for dispatch and to expend no more than five hundred dollars without prior advance approval of the Select Board Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, do I hear any discussion on this?
I think we just did.
Okay, then we're gonna do a roll call, Peter.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
And Katie is a yes, all right, there we go, we have solved that problem with hopefully. Minimal expense, all right, ARPA update is next on the list.
Uh, when I requested more time at the last meeting, we had pushed it to the meeting afterwards.
March sixth, all right, so that's still, and the same with the school boiler, that is update March sixth. All right, so now we have the fund, Town Administrator Report, again, back to you.
All right. The last few weeks has been very busy, so busy I got sick. I've met with, I'll keep this short 'cause I do have to do the CIP presentation. I met with a number of committees, you can read about that in the long version of my. Town Administrator Report, which also holds some financial updates regarding that. I received a estimate from said communication center that to anticipate a fifteen point one percent increase. I was not super pleased with that, but that is in there as well. The DPW report of the last two weeks is in there. And I want to take a moment to recognize Nancy Parent for hitting the ground running with her additional duties with, as the Board of Health and License Clerk. Nancy's customer service experience and willingness to learn is really helping her over there and she's. Doing really well thus far, so I'm happy to see that. We are currently seeking a treasurer, collector and a DPW laborer. Residents at home can visit the town website under employment opportunities to learn more about those. I was happy to receive my first three small grants as Town Administrator over the last few weeks. Two D L T A grants with MRPC, one to finish, underline, bold, shall, like, finish the. Master plan. master plan, and the other to look into the agricultural accessory advisory committee's uses and how they can be brought into the zoning bylaws to increase agricultural and ecotourism in the community. Uh, the other grant we received is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Grant. It is a program that will train our employees on, on phishing attempts and ways to protect the kind of internet and cyber safety of our community. There were many communities that have been robbed of a lot of money, uh, in the past couple of years, Leamester being one. So this training will teach interested employees who, we don't know who they are yet, because I am still working with them to determine who the best suited departments and employees are, just how to deal with that kind of issue. It would be a half-year-long training, one day a week, so they should get some good information out of that, and noting that a lot of our employees have expressed their need for additional computer help, this will help a little bit with that. And that's that for now. The full report can be read online. And I'm going to share my screen to present the capital improvement plan for this year. I apologize for not being as long-winded as I usually am. Started today not feeling well.
I'm just glad we're not on two, that's all I care.
Um, the people left.
Yeah, oh, Heather's still there. Everybody just stayed with the order control.
Yeah. Alright, I am presenting this evening the Hubbardston Capital Improvement Plan as approved by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee on Valentine's Day, two fourteen. I very purposely put a picture of a fire truck on the first page.
That's not good.
No. And I outlined that the town administrator is responsible through section five dash two dash one of the town charter to review the capital planning committee's yearly capital plan and provide suggestions to the select board and the finance committee to assist decision-making during the annual budget process. So that is what we're doing here today. I would like to thank the members of the committee this year, Charles Reed, who is the chair, Francois Steiger, and William Murray. There are two vacancies available on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, so if anyone listening at home or on YouTube later is interested in helping the community plan for large-range purchases down the road, you should reach out and join the CIPC. I, in here, did a brief overview of some of our financial policies and the percentages that have been stated over the last few years. In the past, I'd say six years, the town has done a pretty good job keeping on track with these goals, so the CIPC and myself did our best to maintain that trajectory. There's a five percent stabilization, is set to be five percent of the operating budget. Capital stabilization at one percent of the operating budget. Free cash to generate five percent of the operating budget annually. Capital expenditures to six percent of the operating budget annually. Operating debt, three percent of the operating budget annually. Bring the total annual town reserves to ten percent of the operating budgets. Right here you will see the projections of the next eight years, going over capital expenditure targets, debt tar- debt targets, and free cash use, usage targets. You can take a look at that when you can blow up the screen. Right here are the factors that the town has in their policy for considering if a item is a good capital plan use. We, every year, collect different ideas and different needs and different wants from the different departments and the CIPC, and the town administrator will run through them, set up a large-range target, as you know. Go down to the actual plan. This year in FY twenty-four, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is recommending one hundred thousand dollars in additional road repair. One hundred thousand dollars for the DPW garage roof, that is supplementing the fifty thousand dollars received last year from State Senator Ann Goby. We did a procurement of, we did an RFP for that last week and got a bid of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. I'm working on a contract with that roofing company right now, so that'll even be a little bit less. A Ford F-250 for the director who currently drives a, I wanna say, two thousand and
One.
One Ford Explorer.
Yeah.
That is rotting out at the bottom. This, if, the pictures are attached to the end of this document, so if anyone at home wants to view them. A one hundred thousand dollars for ambulance two replacement, again, that's to supplement two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA, ARPA funding, fifty thousand dollars in Main Street repaving, but that's actually not coming out of capital expenses as we do have a small amount of debt opportunity this year. Where, bec- because a old project is ending and is pa- is paid off, and we do not intend to use that debt until FY twenty-five to make a large purchase, such as a fire truck or something like that. A architect engineering assistant to help the library determine what is priority and when to do different projects, such as the foundation, the windows, and all that stuff, they, it's a dire need for them to do these projects, and it is important first for them to come out and figure out what the permanent order is. And the final thing is nineteen thousand dollars in town office IT replacement. It's a standing twenty thousand dollars. I needed to come up with one thousand dollars, so I took the hit. And that is what that brings us to a grand total of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the capital improvement plan with, again, fifty thousand coming out of debt, bringing us to three eighty, as you will see rolling through the entire document. The, on the screen now, you can see the plan that is multi-year or alternative funding. It outlines a lot of our current goals towards projects that could be funded by grants, projects that could be funded from the, from just different outside revenue sources, you can go through that. A lot of that is the items that we see year in and year out. When one falls out, we try to put another one on. This year, I've had a little bit of a hard time with the capital improvement plan as ARPA and CARES did take a big bite out of our plan. It's a, it's, it's a good problem to have, so I guess I can't complain about it, but I will be looking to revamp the plan next year going into twenty thirty, 'cause there was even, after the realization and watching the meeting, I had several departments come up to me with different ideas other than what was presented at the beginning of the year. Based on the information from the town administrator, the CIPC is projecting the following in terms of capital spending for FY twenty-four. This does not include opportunities for alternative funding such as grants, CPA funds, or other revenue sources. Certified total of free cash, eight hundred and six thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-nine. Free cash used in October, ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents. We unfortunately decided that budgeting out from free cash, a hundred thousand dollars for the operating budget would be a wise decision. A hundred thousand dollars for reserves. A three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for FY twenty-four recommended capital, bringing our total to six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents, leaving a free cash surplus of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents, aligning with the free cash goals of turning over some money each year, saving for that rainy day, and hoping to make larger capital purchases in FY twenty-five and beyond. Right here I outline a number of our, the number of our goals versus the operating budget versus what we are actually doing. We are fairly close on all of our goals, missing our ten percent by ninety thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, fifty-three. The CIPC wants to point out that this plan is designed to help guide the town administrator, the finance committee, and the select board with the FY twenty-four budget process. While the plan demonstrates a deficit, it does not account for potential alternative funding, as had been with most of the reports I've been making. We have to heavily consider all grants, the Holden Hospital account, CPA, existing and potential grants, town reserves, and chapter ninety funds, although the latter two are not recommended. So we're giving, so that is the FY twenty-four to twenty, FY twenty-eight proposed capital plan. I'm sorry for blabbing on. Are there, are there any questions?
Nate?
Yes.
So, uh, can you just quickly, in a high-level, town office IT replacements?
Cloud storage.
Oh, wow. That much of cloud storage?
Yep, it's at the bottom.
Is it? Them is it?
Not on this one, one second.
Oh.
I, I I will send it to you. I, in another version that is not open right now, I have everything attached.
Okay, the version that you click on in your TA report's the same one you have open, so I have it on.
It's the short one because it wouldn't fit on the website.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, and by cloud storage, is this, is this beginning to our, um, the laser piece project, or we're talking just general cloud? We're paying almost twenty thousand dollars a year for cloud storage?
No, it is the storage systems at the COA, one second, there's three or four of them.
Is it cloud storage, or are we just using servers to back up everything offsite?
We're not going offsite with this at all, it's servers. I said cloud storage because I'm not the best IT guy, but.
That's okay, that's okay. I, I thought it was something server-related.
Nope.
Which is, so, that's okay, I'm good. I can also watch offline more details, so.
Alright.
Yeah, 'cause I thought it was the servers.
It is the servers.
Okay, it is the servers.
Is that for replacement of the servers?
It's for replacement of several servers, one over in the, in the COA, and and I'd have to look at where the other one is.
That's okay.
Please?
Are you getting a new server? Did you request a new server?
No.
No?
Okay.
I will get back to you on that.
That's good, we can, I can ask the questions offline, and I'm sure I have like twelve follow-ups, but I won't get everyone else.
Good stuff, Heather, good stuff.
Any other questions?
No, but I think we have no other questions, we'll move on to, uh...
I, I have a question, is the, is the pickup truck gonna be equipped with the plow?
No. It is going to be equipped with the plow package, so that he can get it in another year. But that's something I learned recently, that plows are incredibly expensive.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And this truck is mostly used for transportation to training and that type of events. If it was to be used to plow, it would be as a secondary vehicle, which would still be great to have.
Right.
And that's why, 'cause the CIPC did have a number of questions regarding why he needed an extended cab, so.
Yeah. Or an F-250 if he's on plowing, yeah.
Yeah.
It wa- it was an F-350 to begin with.
Yeah, sure was, don't, don't get me, well, because that's a better plow truck than an F-250.
With a plow, the original price had a plow with it, so.
Yeah, it probably all did, but, you know, prices are crazy right now, so.
Yeah.
Um, alright.
Where is the, um...
The front pictures?
Fire truck.
It is next year.
That's a big one, right?
Yeah, it's, if you go into.
Alright, twenty, I see it, twenty twenty-five, eight oh one.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're saving bandwidth for, as.
Uh, it's gonna be.
Do we have a cur- do we have an update on the one we're replacing with it? Is it, uh, put out of service?
No.
Still in service?
Yep, but thirty years old.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine.
And we would, I had spoken with the chief about looking into used opportunities, because they are out there, we found one in Princeton. But one of our major problems for that is the fire trucks need to be so specific in size
Short. Yes.
Because of where we have to fit them.
Again. Our outdated buildings hose us on that stuff.
So bring a tape measure.
Yeah. It's, yeah, but if it doesn't fit, well, just pack it in, it's fine, just take out that, yeah.
If it doesn't fit, don't buy it.
Yeah, well, that's the whole thing. Most of them won't, because it's, we have to special order the trucks to fit in that building, so most people don't have that lovely problem.
I would call the fire truck manufacturer, it used to be one of Woodville, Hockington. If they know of anybody that has a used truck for sale, 'cause that's where you're gonna find out where they're at.
Yeah, somebody that's upgrading that has the weird same specifications that has to fit into.
And they're probably still in Woodville, Massachusetts, yeah.
Check that out.
Yeah, so maybe that's a.
It's a part of Hockington.
Woodville is part of.
So, you know, based on what, uh, you know, if, if, if the problem with the fire truck is the size of our building, have we ever considered changing the size of our building and finding an off-the-rack fire truck? It's, I mean, is there a significant cost difference between getting one special order that fits in our house, as opposed to buying one?
Standard size.
Standard size, whatever, if there is a standard size?
I think it's more money, right, to make it shorter?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The public's.
Which doesn't make sense, you're getting ripped off to show up in a fire truck.
Is a lo- is a big issue.
Yeah. So it's, it's the, the whole building a building, which granted, public safety building would.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying building a building, I'm saying modify the one we have. Knock out a wall, do something, make it longer, whatever we gotta do.
It.
You know, for thirty thousand dollars, you can extend one of the bays, and if we save two hundred thousand on a stock fire truck.
And that's something, and that's something we can look into.
They don't even have the, I, I don't think that land's available behind a fire station.
Well, it's an old brick building, I don't know if that would be quite.
Well, it is what it is, you could look at it, it's feasible to look at it, I mean, if I fall down.
I, that's what I would worry about, fall down.
I mean, they just spent thirty thousand on a mitigation system, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
So, as I noted, this was, as with every year, there's just the CIPC in my recommendation. It will need approval at town meeting ahead of being any sort of realistic plan. Thank you for listening to me this evening.
Alright, moving on. Okay, policies to review. None?
None.
Alright, matter is not reasonably anticipated by me or Chair. Chris? No? Heather, you usually got something, too.
Heather, your question is going to be if we're having the next meeting.
Is it, though?
It was last time, we had stated that we were going to talk about that.
What, next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, why wouldn't we?
Don't we have a lot of stuff going on?
Yeah, I have a Paxton meeting next week, I think that was the conflict, right?
Yeah, do we need another meeting this month?
I would say no, because that would, unless you can think of a number of things that would come up between now and two days from now, there won't be a lot on the meeting.
No.
Good.
Do I... Do I?
We gonna vote on that?
Hear a motion? Yeah, to remove it. I'm assuming we're gonna need a motion or we just need to just remove it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we skip to the next scheduled meeting and resume our meeting in March.
March sixth.
March sixth. Alright, do I hear a s-?
March sixth.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Peter.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Heather.
Yep.
And Katie, yes. Alright, yay, one last thing to do. Okay. And any other questions? Not reasonably anticipated? No, nothing? Alright, public and press, you're only public. You got anything? No? Okay, alright. So moving on, uh, this is where I'd love to hear a motion to, uh, go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion under Master and Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel personnel. Ryan Kutcher, Chief of Police Contract, to be moving into executive session to only return to open session for the purposes of adjournment.
Alright, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. This will be, uh, any discussion? Nope, roll call. Peter.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Heather.
Yep.
And Katie is a yes. Alright, we'll give it a minute for everything to show.